Recording in progress.
All right, it's six o'clock on December twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. A lot of ones and twos in the day today. So this is a regular city council meeting for the city of Holiday Island. Let's uh we'll call the meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, you want to call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Goomis here. Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I declare quorum. Move on to approve the agenda. I want to make one minor change in the agenda. Under the new business, I want to move Resolution two thousand and twenty one oh twenty nine ahead of Resolution two thousand and twenty one oh twenty eight. Because in oh twenty eight, we're transferring funds into an account that wouldn't exist yet if we didn't pass the other resolution first. So with that minor change, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Linda, approve.
Second.
Linda made a motion to approve. Linda seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We uh Wes distributed minutes from the regular meeting of eleven eighteen and the special meeting of eleven thirty. Uh any discussion on minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as submitted.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or in memoriam? I think it might be noteworthy to mention that the county tax collector Kay Phillips Brown passed away yesterday morning from cancer. She's been battling cancer all year and she did pass away. So the county board, I guess, I guess the process now is for the county board to pass an ordinance or something allowing a replacement to be appointed to fill out their term.
It sounds like somebody.
Somebody just touched something.
All right, we'll move on to reports then. Uh standing committee, financials. Wes, you have any comments on financials?
Uh no, I don't. I mean, I don't have a copy along with me either. I forgot that. But any questions?
Does anybody else have any questions?
I reviewed them.
I just got the report on our sales tax. Third, that'll be distributed this week and I think it was twenty one four, which is more than budget.
Okay. Be uh I mean, we're close to the end of the year, so it'd be interesting to see how um how we fare compared to what we thought we were going to do at the beginning of the year, starting with no history or anything to go by.
And no money?
Yeah, and no money. Uh we did get a.
I've been figuring and I think it's going to play out, even though we didn't get any turnbacks for the first three months, I think we're probably going to be.
Pretty close.
About ninety-two percent of budget on revenue.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I think in the last meeting, we agreed that we would approve the financials before they get posted on the website, so I would entertain a motion that we approve the November financials.
Do we approve or accept?
Or accept. Accept. Right.
Make a motion, we accept the financials through November, is that what?
November, yeah.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion?
I have a feeling I already posted them. It's okay.
All in favor, retroactive, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
They didn't want to get a poster.
All right. The next on the agenda, special committees, broadband grant application, did it get turned in?
Yeah, we we're involved in two of them. Both of them were turned in. Uh I don't know the timetable of when or if they'll be approved. Uh but anyway, uh once we got that letter from you, he used it in both grants and uh so we're we're in the we're in the hopper on that. Uh not specifically broadband, but uh the Arkansas Economic Development Commission had a online uh meeting, not meeting, but seminar on uh community development block grants, which generally are for low to middle income, uh cities with low to middle income populations. But there are certain programs that are eligible for grants that uh they declare senior citizens as LMI regardless. So with our age, median age of sixty-four, there would be some of those community development block grants that we'd be eligible for.
Okay.
So some of them are like blighted areas in the city to to clean those up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh uh water infrastructure. So anyway, there that's down the road, but anyway, I sat in on that, was pretty informative.
Good.
Hey Jerry, with regard to the the one that Rodney was working on, those grants, do you still need the survey posted on the website?
No, I was going to mention that too. We're going to take that down.
Okay.
But you know what, though?
It's up to you.
They may look at it, continue to look at it when they're considering those grants.
Okay.
Because uh when when I went to the meeting a couple, three weeks ago, where the state, the guy with the straight state contract, he had slides that showed significant uh gaps in in our map compared to like Eureka and Berryville, who hadn't done that exercise. And you know, anytime somebody does, completes that and does a speed test, it plots it on the the map, uh color code, uh I can't remember what the colors were.
So they can continually get new versions of the map.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have, I think uh, I think red meant you had poor uh or no, and we had quite a bit of red, so if we could just color that whole map red, it would improve our chances.
We do need to keep pushing that because um I don't know how how many of you or if any of you get this Arkansas Business Magazine, comes out every every week. And this this week's publication had another glossy, uh almost like a book, little book of all the all the cities in Arkansas that apparently paid to have a page in the book. And there were a lot of them, not all of them obviously, but a lot of, a lot of um a lot of cities had their their page in there, you know, and why, why, you know, my city is the best kind of thing. And they're really pushing the work from anywhere thing. And I mean, every city in Arkansas was pushing that work from anywhere. And they all, you know, they all have pictures like uh like um where was it, somewhere down around Hot Springs where they have the Washtetaw Trail, the really, really long hiking and biking trail. They have a picture of somebody on a mountain bike, you know, work from anywhere. So they're they're pushing it. If you don't have good internet connectivity, um and we're going to lose out. Planning Commission report?
The Planning Commission meant last Tuesday to finish its first pass through our model regulations. Uh we started out with a document that had a hundred and seventeen pages and we were working with a version that had sixty-five in it. After going through the first blotch and taking out the notes and the text that we deemed unnecessary and references, we're down to fifty pages, so that's a good improvement. Linda's working on gathering data so we can build a chart for our zoning map to make that process simpler. It'll be based on the unit block and lot, so we can make a table to use and help help in mapping. And we need yet another meeting to hash out some of the details that I'm finding as I go back through this thing. There's a probably workshop that's going to take a couple of us, won't take the whole group probably, and have a public meeting to do that, but go through some of the details like not only the map, but to talk about the zoning districts so that they line up with what we have in our building code. The concern I have with that is that the building code has commercial as well as residential and we didn't put um we didn't put a lot of time on the commercial stuff. We skipped over a lot of it, so I think we can define it, we just may not have old rules that go with it, so.
Yeah, I didn't I I didn't spend much time on it either because, you know, the commercial activity and new construction, at least in Holiday Island, is probably limited based on the fact that there just isn't any land to do any commercial development on.
I think we need to go at least as far as to say, this is what commercial activity is, so if someone wants to do it in residential, we can say, no, it's commercial, that kind of thing, so that's all I have for a report.
From the feedback or the input that I've I've been getting from residents and property owners, there's only one thing they really care about in the zoning ordinance, VRVOs, BNBs, we gotta get control over it, nobody wants them next door. There's more and more of them going in. Uh Fayetteville, there was an article on the Sunday Democrat Gazette, uh that Fayetteville was doing some studies on that, yeah. And they're doing things like acquiring sprinklers in in uh, you know, if you're going to be renting out your property, it has to have sprinklers and all, you know, things like that. So, you know, they're not making it impossible to have a VRVO in a residential area, but they they're making it a little bit more financially challenging.
Why do you think it's, I mean, they've had nightly rentals at Holiday Island forever.
Mm-hmm.
Why are we, why is the picture changing with the, when I went to the BNBs or whatever, Airbnb?
What's what's driving the change?
Yeah, just.
The internet.
No, I know, but why are why are they so opposed to them? I mean, there's been night.
Because.
People have nightly rentals forever.
Yeah, but it was probably like, you know, thirty or forty homes being rented out by local companies that were managing it. Now it's managed from afar by a computer and there's two hundred and ninety-six of them or something like that. So and more coming every day. I get calls all the time from people that want to buy property here and uh and want to know what what's on the horizon for VRVOs.
I think, yeah, we need to take advantage of, you know, I read an article a week or so ago where Rogers changed their method of taxing BNBs and and rolled it in with the hotels or motels or something.
Uh I I apologize for getting us off track here.
We need to add that on the agenda sometimes, that that's a pretty serious issue.
Yeah.
Well, we do.
I didn't want to turn this into a planning commission.
Give that to your work session.
So. All right, anything else, Linda?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for all your work.
Appreciate it.
And we will have to get back together and scrub that and and try to get that past.
Sergio, are you talking about another meeting before the one we set?
Uh probably, you know, I'm I was further along, I guess, going through it than I thought I was, that another work session with one or two people, maybe we can get a whole bunch more done. I may have something ready for January eleventh that we can consider for adopting. The whole issue is, the issue is the zones and what we're going to name them and how the document reflects them. That's the work that we have to do yet. We just went right past all of that when we were doing our oversight.
And then we ended up coming up with a map scheme?
Well, what we talked about doing is just having a plot map of the community and then reference all those lots by, you know, lot block.
Yeah, I think that's the easiest way to do it.
The statute allows us to do that, so.
Yeah. All right, moving on then to old business under new business. Um we, it was pointed out that in the last meeting, we passed Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-five, which was the resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Holiday Island to utilize state aid to street monies for the following project, the Holiday Island Road overlay. And I didn't call for a motion to approve, uh to to take the vote. So as a matter of formality, I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-five.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-five.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. We have any discussion? Uh I suppose we should renew the roll call vote on this.
Okay, Councilmember Goomis? Aye. Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
That was aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So it passed again.
Yeah.
But I hope I'm accurate.
I apologize, I usually catch you on that.
Well, it prompted me to rewrite out my instructions, so we're going to go through that. Uh I'm going to get this Robert's Rules of Order thing here nailed down if I have to keep running for mayor until I'm ninety-eight. But um I I've come to one conclusion and that's that um we approved the agenda and the agenda has these items, these resolutions and ordinances on the agenda to be discussed. So there's no need for a motion to put that resolution or ordinance on the floor for discussion. It's already been approved for discussion. So we'll go right into um reading the resolution or the ordinance, calling for a vote, having discussion, and then voting.
Mr. Mayor, so if I have a problem with something that's on the agenda, it has to come up with the agenda approval time, and I would recommend removing something, we'd have a debate and a vote on that amendment, how that will take place?
Okay. Yeah, if if a council member doesn't feel like it's the right time to consider that ordinance, then the council can vote on it to take it off the agenda. All right, so that gets us to Resolution. The next thing on the agenda is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-six, amending Resolution two thousand and twenty-one uh dash zero twenty-four on posting locations. Wes, do you have copies of those?
No.
Okay, I did.
I did not.
I have. So would you read, just read the Resolution without, read the whole posting policy?
Read the whole Resolution.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh twenty-six. Resolution adopting policy for publishing, posting, and notification requirements for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. This resolution replaces in total Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh eighteen and two thousand and twenty-one zero twenty-four. Whereas the city of Holiday Island must notify its citizens concerning official actions and regulatory decisions. And whereas there are many statutes with varying publishing, posting, and notification requirements, and whereas the city of Holiday Island must comply with the state of Arkansas statutes covering all municipalities, notify its citizens, and whereas locations for public postings must be approved and maintained by the city of Holiday Island, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That the city of council policy, publishing, posting, and notification requirements shall be adopted, including approval to purchase bulletin boards and construction materials direct and maintain the bulletin boards and to establish the locations as permanent placement. Number one, adopt the Holiday Island policy for publishing, posting, and notification requirements. Addass policy details the posting requirements for ordinances, financial statements, and other official actions of the city council as required by Arkansas statutes. Two, approval for mayor to expend the funds as needed to purchase, construct, maintain, and maintain five suitable bulletin boards at special locations in Holiday Island, on Holiday Island's urban improvement district, I said land or buildings. Three, approved locations for posting locations. The city council designates the following five most public places within the corporate limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas, for the posting of notifications upon town owned, that should be city owned probably, and manage bulletin boards. The one, the bulletin board outside the entrance to the city office and one ten Woodstale Drive, Suite one oh three. Two, the bulletin board inside Sunfest Market Cafe on the north wall and one Forest Park Drive. Three, the bulletin board outside the entrance to the long room at Holiday Island Country Club, one country club drive. Four, the bulletin board on the sign kiosk at the clubhouse, one country club drive. And fifth, the bulletin board inside the district office boardroom at one ten Woodstale Drive. That's adopted by the city council of Holiday of Holiday Island, Arkansas, this date of December twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, with the one change, to change the word town to city, um I would entertain a motion that we approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-six.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Linda made the motion to approve. Linda seconded it. Any discussion? The change, the only change to the policy is the location of the one, we have a bulletin board inside the city hall office right now, which isn't really for all practical purposes, a very public place. And we're moving it to the sign kiosk by the codos on the backside and we'll make it, make sure that it's accessible there. Uh any other discussion? Then I'll call for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Goomis?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh twenty-six, with the correction is approved and I'll run the copies after I make that correction. Moving on to next, uh agenda item is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-seven, uh Zoom meetings. Uh I have copies of that.
It's a long one. Hey, Elwood.
Uh I would entertain a motion that we uh that we read this resolution by title only and during the discussion phase, Linda can explain what we're doing with this resolution since it's pretty long-winded otherwise.
I'll move that we put two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-seven on the floor for discussion by and read by title only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Wes, you want to read the title and then?
Okay. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one zero twenty-seven, a resolution revising the use of the digital broadcast application form.
Okay.
Zoom, right? Is the last word Zoom on your title?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh I'll entertain a motion to pass to approve the resolution and then we'll have discussion.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-seven.
I have a second?
I'll second.
Ken made the motion and Linda seconded it. Uh any discussion? Linda, you want to tell us in a nutshell what's in the resolution?
Well, we started doing Zoom basically because Arkansas State Legislature passed a law uh in twenty, early twenty twenty, saying that if the governor declares a state of emergency for the state of Arkansas, that a public meeting can be conducted solely by electronic means. And the public would have a right, as long as you make it available to the public, to have a right to participate in the meeting. And most most governmental units started using Zoom or some other kind of application that does the same thing as Zoom does. And we've been using Zoom ever since we started actually at the beginning of the year. I don't think he declared the emergency until it was like, what, uh May or something like?
March.
March, March.
Oh, it says here.
It's in here, isn't it? It says March eleventh. So, yeah, but we started doing Zoom as a matter of course in the beginning. Oh, that was, that was in two thousand and twenty-one, though. I mean, so they passed that law in Arkansas in two thousand and twenty.
Right.
So and the and we were under a state of emergency when we started meeting.
Right.
So we did it that way. And so now the state of emergency no longer exists. Uh it was, the last time he canceled it was September twenty-seventh. He allowed state of emergency to expire and that's in this ordinance, it says that. And we've had all kinds of issues using Zoom from time to time and it, we don't really have the resources to hire anybody to run the Zoom for us, so they'd have to be here in the meeting room. And so, you know, I've been doing it and it hasn't been a great experience every, every meeting we've had. So I think, you know, we we discussed it in previous meetings, that we kind of wanted to shift away from having to worry about the audience participating via Zoom and having to constantly monitor Zoom for audience participation. And the meeting room is open, anyone can come here and attend it. I think we also still want to, however, offer Zoom as a convenience and a courtesy to people, so if they want to watch, or certainly it will be our means of recording the meetings because we can get full video that way. And we will post those recordings after the fact, so people could always watch them after the fact. But the, this ordinance is going to institute some different ways that we intend to use Zoom going forward.
Resolution?
This resolution.
Yeah.
Thank you. And so one of them, one of the new things we're going to do is we're going to make it so that the person that's running the Zoom meeting, I only have to start it and end it basically and record it and post the recording. We will, instead of having to admit people manually like we do today, we're going to start putting a passcode out with the link and whoever clicks on the link to join the Zoom will also have to enter that passcode and then they will get automatically joined to the meeting. No one would have to do that manually. And so that's the first big change. It's, I think it's only like a six or seven-digit code, but it will be, you know, put everywhere we click the link, so it shouldn't be that hard for people. put everywhere we click the link, so it shouldn't be that hard for people to do. Um, also, uh, we're going to.
It'll be a broadcast mode then?
Yeah, we will, we won't be monitoring chat or paying any attention to chat.
Will it be disabled?
We can't disable it.
Can't disable it?
I don't believe so. I haven't found a way to disable it. Uh, you know, it's there if we want to look at it later, but it's not going to be a part of our meeting.
Will they automatic, al- automatically be muted? Can't do that.
I'm not sure I can automatically mute. I might have to go and mute them, but I'll see if that's possible. I, I have a hunch it's not, but I know there are some meeting facilities that do automatically mute people, and I'll check into that because that would be ideal. Uh, but we're going to use it like it's broadcast online. We're just recording it, uh, but people can watch live. And the chairman will not solicit any comments from the participants on Zoom. If people want to comment, they will be encouraged to come in person to the meetings and offer their comments, or send them in beforehand, you know? Uh, where they could be read here, but we aren't going to take them live over Zoom. And, uh, you know, we'll end, at the end of the meeting, we'll just wrap up the recording and, and post it. So that's about it. Any questions?
Okay, so kind of in a nutshell, it'll be an opportunity for people to still observe proceedings. Um, but, um, it, it makes it official, I guess, that, um, Zoom is not a requirement for us to have a legal meeting. There was a question about that as to whether or not it constituted, um, a legal meeting if Zoom didn't work. And, um, and it frees up a council member to participate in the council meeting as opposed to being the Zoom meeting manager, so.
We still also have an audio recording.
Right.
Yeah, I think we'll do that as a backup just in case too. And also I will point out that we, we passed a similar resolution for the planning commission, uh, last week. We're going to do both meetings in same one.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I would think it would be good if you could automatically mute it because I was on a meeting a week or two ago where there was a lot of people, I think it was more a hundred people or more on, might have been a league meeting. And someone had, didn't have their audio off and they were talking. Someone was in their office, they were talking business.
Dog barking and, uh.
Oh, it's pushing.
All right, uh, well, Linda will look into that. Are we ready for a vote? Um, Wes will call vote.
Okay, um, Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Resolution twenty one oh twenty seven.
Oh, and this will go into effect the next meeting we do.
Yeah. Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twenty seven is passed. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twenty nine, establishing a general re- uh, fund reserve. The recorder's getting beat, but fairly short, uh, now we'll read the whole thing.
Okay. Shall I read it?
Yep.
Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero twenty nine. A resolution establishing a general fund reserve for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Arkansas. Whereas the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas will from time to time have surplus funds at the end of the fiscal year. And whereas the City of Holiday, Holiday Island, Arkansas will from time to time require funds to meet emergencies and unanticipated expenditures. And whereas the annual budget and revenue is based on estimates that made from time to time fall short of estimates. And where it is, whereas it is necessary for the City of Holiday Island to have funds and reserve to meet these unanticipated needs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island that a fund be established called the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas General Fund Reserve. Be it further resolved that this fund be held in an account separate from the regular general fund account and that transfers into and out of this fund will require a majority vote of the City Council. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve twenty one, two thousand twenty one.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve twenty twenty one dash zero twenty nine, establishing the general reserve fund.
I'll make such a motion.
Pat made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Want to wait till Jerry gets back?
Uh.
We still have a forum.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, uh, when you say fund, we're not, we got a general fund, we got a street fund, and we got separate bank, this is not a separate bank account.
Yes.
Why? All you need to do is set up an account under the general fund. The reserve account.
I don't think you're saying not have a separate bank account.
Yeah.
Well, for one thing, I think there are issues the way the accounting software works. I don't see that working very well. It'd be complicated, plus the funds would actually not be segregated.
At some point down the road, it is conceivable that that reserve fund would have sufficient money in it, that it would be invested in something. You wouldn't want to be taking money from the checkbook, basically, and putting it in.
The districts using, the districts using the same software, and they've had reserve accounts forever.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they do theirs. I know they have the same software, but well, I've talked to the software people, you know. My last discussion was, it was several weeks ago now, but he didn't know about that. He came to him and huddled around whether he could do it. And I can't see, the way the software works, I can't see how you would do it because you, you put in the balance on the bank statement and.
Well, you don't actually put the funds over there, you just say, I've got, you know, this is a reserve seventy five thousand and that's means that, that seventy five thousand dollars are your ju- your ju- your cash account is encumbered. So.
I just think it'd make things more complicated.
I don't know, but I think having three bank accounts would be more complicated, but.
Not really.
Okay.
There shouldn't be that many transfer, transactions.
Well, it's just a, it's just another one you got to keep track of and reconcile every month.
The district does put a lot of their reserves in CDs too.
Yeah.
And you've got all ki- we got all kinds of reserve accounts. And it, and they're all in the same checking account.
Well, the, the way the software works, when I do the bank reconciliation, you know, I can, I understand what you're saying to do, but then I would have to finagle the bank reconciliation so that on the bank reconciliation, the balance didn't agree with.
Yeah, seventy five thousand dollars will still be in the checking account.
But I'd have to pledge the, the checking account balance when I put it down in reconciliation, so.
Okay. I'm not keeping the book, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how you can truly encumber something unless it's in, or if it's in a different account.
Well, it's, it's a reserve, it's a.
Yeah, but if it's in a, if it's all in one account, it's easy to spend it. Just keep writing checks.
I wouldn't let you do that. I would be honest with you, like a duck.
All right, is there any other discussion on, uh, uh, resolution establishing the reserve fund? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. If we get four yeas.
Okay.
That's a forum, or that's sufficient.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
And Councilmember Pittman?
Pittman. V A, it adds to encumbered.
All right, so, uh.
So.
The vote is four zero.
Yeah.
It's passed four zero.
Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twenty nine is passed. Now we can move on to the next thing on the agenda is, um, Resolution twenty twenty one oh twenty eight. A resolution amending the twenty twenty one budget. Would the recorder please read?
Okay.
That resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twenty eight. A resolution amending the twenty one, the two thousand twenty one budget for the City of Holiday Island. Where the City of Holiday Island passed Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero zero five, establishing an operating budget for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. And whereas over the course of the year, the City Council has approved the expenditures that exceeded the budgeted amounts. And whereas the approved expenditures did not cause overall expense, spending to exceed the budgeted appropriations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that two specific line items in the twenty twenty one budget will be amended as follows. Equipment from a budget of two, of nine thousand six twenty one to an amended budget of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars. And for the fire department, from a budget of forty five thousand eight thirty three to an amended budget of forty six thousand dollars. And additionally, be it resolved that seventy five thousand dollars be transferred from the general fund to the general fund reserve prior to year end. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve twenty one, two thousand twenty one.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twenty eight and then we'll open for discussion.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash oh twenty eight.
Ken made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Linda seconded it. Any discussion? No discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll, uh, move to the roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, Resolution twenty twenty one dash oh twenty eight is passed. Next thing on the agenda is Ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero one nine. The twenty twenty two operating budget. Um, I was going to do something. Oh, uh, I would entertain a motion that we suspend the rules requiring three readings for this ordinance and, um, and read the, um, ordinance for passage.
Read the third reading.
Yeah, read the third reading.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings?
So moved, second.
Roll call vote?
That was Dumas, Pittman?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Here, ah!
You can't vote here. Only congressmen can do that.
So he abstained.
All right, so we've suspended the rules, so Wes, would you read the, uh, ordinance, please?
Ordinance number two, twenty twenty one dash zero one nine. Ordinance adopting the operating budget for two thousand twenty two for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas and declaring an emergency. Whereas the City of Holiday, or the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas has made a comprehensive review of the pro- proposed budget. And whereas, in the opinion of the City Council, the proposed budget reflects as accurately as possible the anticipated revenue and expenditures of the City of Holiday Island for the two thousand twenty two calendar year and whereas this ordinance being necessary for the City of Holiday Island to maintain operations affecting one one of twenty twenty two, an emergency is declared to exist and the emergency, and the ordinance shall be enforced immediately upon passage. Now be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that section one, the ordinance shall be known as the budget ordinance for the twelve month period beginning on one month twenty two and ending on twelve thirty one of twenty twenty two. And that the attached budget documents reflect the estimated revenue and expenditures for the period. All revenues and appropriations are estimates and are subject to change during the budgetary year. Section two, the amounts of revenues and expenditures for the year twenty twenty two are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purpose set forth in the calendar year ending twelve thirty one, twenty twenty two. Estimated revenue, general, general fund, two hundred eighty five thousand six seventy two. Appropriations for the general fund of two hundred seventy six thousand six twelve. Street fund appropriations of three hundred fifty three thousand one eighty nine. And the street fund, that was the estimated revenue for the street fund. Street fund appropriations of three hundred forty thousand. Total estimated revenue, six hundred thirty eight thousand eight hundred sixty one. Total appropriations, six hundred seven thousand eight forty two. Since the financing of the operations of the city after one one twenty one is dependent on this budget ordinance being enforced at that time, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance will become effective immediately upon passage. Passed and approved by the City Council of the Holiday, of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve twenty one, two thousand twenty one.
That'll quickly have to read the attachments.
Right, there's a summary of the budget attached.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget. After which we'll have discussion and then we'll have to have a separate motion on the emergency clause.
I'll move to approve.
Linda made the motion to approve the budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion?
I have one, oh, go ahead, Ken.
I have one question. Um, I, 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 I have a question, but I, I don't think I'm going to talk about it, so.
Well, Linda withdraw your question.
No, no, I mean, I actually have two questions, but.
You want to talk about either one of them?
Yeah, I want to talk about.
We need to guess?
Uh, the three hundred thousand dollars that would, uh, that, that, that the state is giving us for the paving.
That doesn't run through our city funds?
I know, but it's a gift. Do we not have to record that?
I don't know. It's a grant.
It's a grant.
That'd affect your rec.
I wouldn't think we would. What we're accounting, what we account for is revenue and expenditure. I wouldn't think we would, what we're accounting, what we account for is revenue and expenditures that we have. And we're not having, we're not dealing with that cash.
We're not, so it.
We're actually just paying them.
Well, if we accept those roads, we don't have to keep assets.
What was that?
We don't have assets, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, just, I, I think that at this point, we don't know for sure that we're gonna get the grants. We're, we've been told it's a ninety nine percent chance, but um it's not, you know, it's not official yet. But um, you know, we can do more checking on that and if, if at the time, if when the time comes. Uh, it seems appropriate to amend the budget to reflect that somehow, we can pass a.
Okay.
A resolution amending the budget.
Okay. It's the only question I have.
Yeah.
I, you know, I just noticed that just now, it's on, it's in your table that's on the ordinance. The total appropriations is not added up correctly. Have an addition, let's say, I think.
On the cover sheet?
On the cover sheet. But we're in the.
I thought it's sixty seven.
Sixteen, six twelve.
Two sixty seven.
Six one, six, six one two. Okay. The total appropriation. You wanna make that note and we'll uh make an amendment to the uh. To the uh ordinance as read to reflect that correction.
Which one?
That was probably an old total with, with me.
I don't know which one is not right.
I changed your numbers, I didn't change the total, yeah, that's, that's what it is. Linda gave me some updates today or yesterday on what the uh IT costs are gonna be. It was only a few hundred dollars, but uh. Um, when I changed the face of the ordinance, I didn't. It was, it wasn't a formula set up in that table, so.
Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah, everything should, the attachment should be correct because they can.
The six one, six, six twelve must have been right because it looks like that, that's what this would put across to, I believe.
The attachments were from an Excel spreadsheet, so I'm sure the numbers are right there, it's just that it didn't, it didn't retaliate on the face of the ordinance. All right, so with that correction, is there any other discussion on the budget? If not, we'll move on to the roll call vote.
Yeah, I'll see what's running.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the budget is approved now, can I get a motion on the emergency clause?
Uh, now the ordinance already said we were declaring an emergency.
Yeah, but the law says you have to have a special vote on the emergency clause.
So.
Second.
Who did it?
Jerry made the motion, Linda seconded it, any discussion?
You have to post the budget, give it to the county, oh, in January or?
Uh, I don't know, I don't, I don't remember that.
You have to give it to the county.
I'll have to look that up.
I think they have to post it, don't they, they have to post it to the secretary of state? I don't think it's the county, I think the state level.
Let's vote on the emergency clause first and then we can discuss that. Any discussion on the emergency clause? I'll call, we'll call for the vote.
Okay, roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so the budget is approved and the emergency clause is approved. And I guess we'll have to see what we, I didn't send the budget to anybody last year, did you?
No.
I don't think so.
We didn't have a budget in twenty one. Beginning of the year, we didn't.
We passed it?
No, but then we, we sort of.
I mean, it has to be reported, it has to be published or reported someplace in, like February something, I heard.
Look, you wanna check on that?
Well, yeah, I can, we don't, of course, we don't have any paper to publish it in.
Well, we have to post it at our.
But there, there is a required, if you, if you, you know.
It'll be posted.
Well, then you put it on the bulletin boards or, and I thought it had, I thought a copy of it had to go to the county too, so I don't know.
I, I don't know, well, I don't remember doing that last year, but we can check.
Well, that might be a homeover from B O C is the county, but it has to be published someplace, I don't know.
Yeah, it's an ordinance, it has to be published. Okay.
Well, the budget has to be, and if the budget is an ordinance, so it's kinda not.
Last year, we did a budget with a resolution instead of an ordinance, but in, in checking with other cities, if, if.
We did it.
It was apparent that most cities use an ordinance to approve the budget. All right, moving on, next item on the agenda is the donation that I brought up in the last meeting. And I had, and I didn't know what it was for. So, you cold hearted people turned me down.
I know what it was for, it was for an escape to the Bahamas.
I called, I called the gentleman at the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in Harrisville. And um he said that this two hundred and forty dollars goes into a pool of money. That they use to offset the cost of writing grants and applying for grants. For uh member cities. And uh offsetting, if necessary, some of the matching funds that are required from time to time on grants. It's a, the number is based on population, so it's kinda like the municipal league does. And uh, I'll give you those two hundred and forty dollars. Now, it's not mandatory, if we don't pay it and we ask them to apply for a grant for us, they would still do it yet. But I think if we're going to ask them to help us with economic development, we ought to give them their two hundred and forty dollars.
For what it's worth, the uh resolution that we passed. Many meetings ago about you giving you the authority to appoint a mayor's task force.
Mm-hmm.
In that report or that ordinance, it talks about uh being involved with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development.
Yeah.
So, it was one of the resources that we want to tap into.
Okay, just for the record, I would like somebody to make a motion to go ahead and make this two hundred and forty dollar donation.
Yeah, I, I moved that we paid the two hundred and forty dollars to the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development.
District.
District.
I'll second it.
Linda, Linda seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Wes, you can go ahead and. And then the last thing on the agenda is a um. Living up to a promise, I think. Our commitment I made, um, I hope you back me up on it.
By your word, no doubt.
Um, way back when, um, Bob started this whole thing, I'm glad you're here.
I think I, I remember.
The uh, the uh. I said Board of Commissioners, when I was still on the board, voted to make the guard check go away at the front entrance. And that started a chain reaction of things. And um, you know, Bob had, you know, supervised or, or pushed the issue forward to actually get it removed. And um, so then, you know, we, we said, what are we gonna do with the rest of the island? Because it was um pretty much a maintenance, it was a lot of work to maintain it. And basically volunteers were doing all the maintenance on it. Uh, a lot of scrubber to trim and stuff like that, so anyway. Heist had put together a committee and after several meetings and sharing ideas and everything. John Prang went to Bear Creek, got a proposal and a, and a, that came with a price tag. And Heist allocated fifteen thousand dollars for the project. Um, then, after the fact, um, we found out that in order to separate the wiring for the streetlights. Uh, from Robert Knapp's building, the power was kind of coming off of ever since that building was the, you know, the developer's.
Or any issues.
Sales office. Um, we had to, in order to get the power and the irrigation over to the Gulf Coast side of the street. We had to do two boreings under the street. And that was going to be an additional, minimum of an additional three thousand dollars. And I said that the city could probably come up with three thousand dollars. Um, now, it, you know, they finally, you know, actually finally just got all the bills in for the electrical work and everything. And I don't think it came out to the full eighteen thousand, uh, Danny gave me a itemized list of the project cost. Um, let me see if he's got the totals in here. They have the, the, for the wiring, the total was thirty seven hundred and seventeen dollars. So they're asking the city if we could contribute two thousand towards the thirty seven seventeen. Uh, I think it's reasonable since um the island is in super shape now and good for, you know, for another twenty five years.
Aye.
So I would like, I would entertain a motion to uh cover this two thousand dollars for the district.
I think a motion may be, uh, any of the two thousand dollars is our part of the project.
Okay, now do I have a second?
I'll say.
Linda's saying, Ken made the motion and Linda seconded it, any discussion?
I had a question on your email on that. It, it talked about some additional painting or something, what, what, what is, was that?
Uh.
You know what that's?
There was, there was something, there, there's still, you know, one more shoe to drop, I guess. Um, they wanna paint the framework around the sign out front.
They don't like John Deere Creek?
Yeah.
Be careful though, you know who painted that? Ken Brown and I did it. No, I, I did.
There.
The leftover paint we painted the Christmas trees with, so.
I'm, I'm leaving that in the hands of Heist, I don't pick, paint colors, I've learned my life on that one, I don't.
I've heard.
But I think that there's a desire to paint it back to the brown, to match the rest of the ironwork that's up there, that's on.
You go.
On the stone walls. And uh, that, that's not part of this project, that's not what this money is going for. If Heist wants to repaint the framework up there, that, that's.
I, I just ordered what, I mean, there was some illusion that something else was gonna happen and I didn't understand.
Yeah, there was just, that was it, it was painting the framework around the sign.
I would, I, we, since you're here, could I ask Bob a question?
Is it about this?
Yeah.
Then we'll finish this up first.
Okay.
Uh, but I did have a question for Wes. Uh, streetlights are obviously, um, um. You, we can spend street fund money on streetlights, right?
I can, no, I think Lanny said no.
We can't on the electricity to run them, but certainly we can spend street fund money to, to provide streetlights.
I don't know.
Uh, I think we can, we'll go check that.
I thought I read that somewhere.
Yeah.
There was a whole list of things that.
I think that that was one of the things that.
I think I did.
In fact, I think that.
It was in that letter, it was in that thing.
That, that specifically we could spend it on.
There was in that, that decision from Hudson's, Hudson, Hudson's or Hudson's? Said, gave a whole list of things we could supposedly spend street money for, except.
If we, if we, if it's, if it's legitimate to spend, to use street fund money to do this, and I think it is, but. Confirm that, that I would uh want this to be paid for out of the street funds.
I think.
Because there's more cushion in the street fund money.
I don't know, I would.
No, I, I would say.
That's not lights.
This was for wiring for the streetlights.
No, that was wiring for irrigation.
That's, that's not, the irrigation isn't a light brick.
Yeah, it is.
It's not really for street.
Not the sprinklers.
What, what's over the wires, there's some going over the wires. And you put, my irrigation system has electricity in it.
Well, this is, this is the wiring for the streetlights, it's the wires that are going through the tube, under the road to the light bulbs. And it doesn't even cover all of the cost of that, so.
Well, uh, I, I was gonna ask Wes, that was one question, and another, do we have a budget for two thousand dollars in there? I mean, why, we didn't budget any money in the street fund for twenty twenty one.
For twenty twenty one?
The only thing that's budgeted in there was paving. So I think it would be a lot easier to put it in the, out of the general. He, you're, you're not, your neck's on the block now, I mean.
Uh, well, my reference would be to take it out of the street fund because it is street. Um, to me, it is directly related to uh streets and.
Oh, yeah.
And security.
You might have to amend the, amend the budgeting.
I guess we can check with the league.
I don't think you got any, you haven't got any.
Lanny isn't there this week, but he did call me, he's checking his messages.
Um, you, you, there's nothing budgeted for that in the street fund.
Well, there's nothing budgeted for it in the general fund either.
You could care, there's some, some other things there that we could cover it probably, anyway. I don't have.
I guess we're concerned about having enough money in the street fund for the project next year.
Well, that was before Jack Stevens called.
If that was, if our, if our.
Worry about it.
If Santa Claus comes, we have no problem. Santa Claus.
All right, any more discussions?
Stuck in a chimney.
At least vote on approving it.
Okay, Wes can figure out where we're going to charge it to.
That's right. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Okay, I was just gonna say, if we're uh, if, if we're just contributing two thousand dollars to the project, including landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. And streetlights, I mean. Probably gotta leave the place.
It's a median in the street, it ought to be covered.
Uh, yeah, I think so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll uh, we'll figure out which company it's gonna come out of. And while we're talking about medians in the street, uh, the median on Park. Where you go into uh the shopping center is dark as night, at night. So uh, it would appear as though the power to those streetlights has been cut off. I did ask Danny uh to look into that, uh, because that's probably the next one that we, you know, we. We didn't, the, the one, the one up front by the main entrance, we didn't technically wrestle away from Tom. Because he kinda walked away from that one a long time ago. But he has kind of expressed an interest in having control of the median up in the um, up in the park yet, over the last few years.
Um, was that?
Heist did rewire the streetlights up there for him a couple of years ago to go to LEDs. And it was a pretty extensive project to get him rewired. But if Tom was. But if Tom is no longer maintaining that median or those streetlights, that's a very dangerous intersection without those streetlights at night.
Does he control those sign, the signage of businesses, those, that little row of, yeah, but that.
I can't see how he controls anything.
That, that, that island, who does that belong to?
Well, that's what I asked Danny to get involved in.
Because that, that wooden sign in there looks like.
To me, it, to me, it, uh.
It's fallen down.
This is, this is a HISA problem, but, you know, it's a problem that I passed on to Danny, but.
Tom believes he has ownership.
Yeah.
It's what he told me.
Yeah.
Does he have a deal?
How can he have ownership?
Who, who has ownership?
It's in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
It's not a road, no.
Well, Park, Park is a, well.
It's, it's a private.
Anyway, our rotary club is interested in fixing that sign.
Park, Park, uh, I, I guess the place to start, you know, for HISA would be to find the records of what was dedicated to HISA and what wasn't. Um, I know that Dan, uh, that Kenny has been carrying Park Drive on the HISA list of streets that he maintains, and we are on a regular basis patching the pothole right on the intersection of Park and whatever the one is that goes over to the police office. That little center of that intersection is constantly sinking away and is probably gonna have to be major repaired one of these days. But in my opinion, and it's not a city issue, but in my opinion, if the street, if Park Drive was dedicated to the district, I don't, unlike Ken, I don't see how you could dedicate a street and not dedicate the median.
But that median is part of the road.
But Danny is on top of it, and Bob's gonna help him.
And.
I just think we need the lights turned back on.
Yeah.
All right, uh, that is the last agenda item, so we'll move on to public comments. Any, any public comments from Bob?
Nope.
Oh, come on.
I was gonna say something on the BLC's behalf, but I don't remember what it was anymore. I was gonna give you credit for something, but I don't remember what it was anymore.
I would do that, I'd go.
And maybe all the good work of the previous chairperson.
Is, uh, is Suzanne gonna keep doing the monthly district manager report?
I don't know. I don't know.
I hope so.
A longstanding tradition that you started?
I don't know. I think, I think it's beneficial.
I, I think, I think everybody appreciated it. Um, I encourage her to do that. Uh, councilmember comments?
Do it.
All right, moving on to scheduling, regular meeting.
January eighteenth, six P.M., Tuesday night.
January sixteen.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Um, Ken suggested, and I think it's a good idea, to have a workshop in January to establish some goals and objectives for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, does everybody kinda think that's a good idea?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we, we wanna pick a date for that?
Then. The previous Tuesday at, at, is planning commission.
The D.
That would be a bad.
Eleven.
Yes, sir, the eleven is planning commission.
Uh, pick a day other than Tuesday or?
Um.
We, the first two Tuesdays of the month are gone, so I, you know, I don't think, uh.
Thursday thirteenth.
Thirteenth is what?
It's Thursday, second Thursday.
Thursday or thirteenth is a Thursday.
One o'clock?
Is a Thursday.
One o'clock, sound good?
I don't think we need to do it at night.
No.
Yeah? I wonder if it's back back during.
Oh, is that, that might be, I mean, yeah.
January thirtiethers. One o'clock?
Uh, feed me your thoughts on that, and I'll try to put together an agenda.
Okay.
All right.
What about us? Uh, this list here that we had.
A what?
Six.
This would be a record short city council meeting if we can, uh, get a motion.
Everything that we have to do.
Yeah. Move to the. We have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second. Good Lord, I don't like to say that.
Ken seconded it. Jerry made a motion to adjourn, Ken seconded it, and Linda is pondering something. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned.